Elliot, are you ready? Good, alright. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Oviedo City Council Chambers. If everybody can rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Councilman Hankin, why don't you lead us in it tonight?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Chief Buchanan, will you do the invocation for us tonight?
If you'd like to pray with us, please bow your head and do so at this time. Heavenly Father, we pray to you night thanking you for this day you've given us, and we thank you for all the many blessings you also have given us. We ask that you share your guidance with us tonight as we make decisions. We also ask that for their service and dedication, say you bless this council as well as bless the two new members that were elected. Please continue to watch over our public safety personnel, keeping them safe during their shifts and returning them home to the end of their shifts. Also, Lord, for those in our community that may be suffering from a loss or illness or just in a bad place, we ask that you wrap your arms around them, show them your comfort and your grace. These things we ask for and pray in your name. Amen.
Thank you, Chief. Drew, is that Scott Carr out there? Do I see him? From UCF? There he is. Scott, how are you?
Doing great, how are you?
I'm doing great also. Alrighty, we are going to, if it's the pleasure of the council, I'd like to pull Resolution number nine, item number nine, from the consent agenda, which is Resolution number 3852-19, and move it up to Item A ahead of the ceremonials, because we need to vote on it and approve it first, and then we can make a presentation. Is that okay with council?
Yes.
Alrighty. So, let's switch on down here to Item number nine. Alrighty, Item number nine is Resolution number 3852-19. It is the UCF hometown team and flag. Mr. Cobb, can you do a brief introduction for us?
Yes, Mayor. This is a request for the council to approve the naming of the University of Central Florida as Oviedo's hometown team, and to require a flag representing the University of Central Florida be flown in front of the City Hall 24 hours before each home football game and continually at the Twin Rivers Golf Course. It's recommended that the City Council adopt Resolution number 3852-19.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. What is the pleasure of council? We have two UCF, well, we have one FDU alum and one UCF alum on the day, so...
Mr. Mayor.
Why don't one of you make the motion, one of you make the second.
I'll make the motion to approve Resolution number 3852-19.
I'll second.
We have motion and a second, and Deputy Mayor, the floor is yours.
This is great. Go Knights!
Charge on.
Councilman Britton, and I only tease him, guys, it wasn't FDU when he graduated. His degree says UCF.
Class of eighty-three.
I was a little bit later than that.
That was in the last century, though. Yeah. This is great. We want to have a great partnership with UCF, and we wanted to continue.
Thank you, we appreciate it.
Councilman Hankin, Councilman Chudnow, anything?
Well, to see that flag flying out there for the football games, and Mr. Mayor was instrumental in that, so it's always good. We're so proud, just three miles to our south, having this awesome university and football team, so go Knights, charge on, and happy to have you. And new council, make sure that flag flies proudly.
Can we get magnets made that say "Oviedo's hometown team"?
Chief, anything? Huge UCF booster and official UCF parking lot attendant. You have the shirt!
Somebody has to do it.
And, folks, he actually has the shirt that says "UCF Parking Lot Attendant".
He's like, "I'm on a fixed income", you know? Now, I enjoy the games and cheering for the Knights, so I fly the flag also.
Alright, how many UCF grads do we have in the audience? Everybody stand up, who's a UCF grad?
There's a lot.
There you go, Scott. Alright. Alright, congratulations. Alright, now I am gonna read this, but I'll wait till we come down there and I'm gonna read it in its entirety, but let's get a motion to adopt. All those in favor of the motion on the table to adopt Resolution number 3852-19, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Gentlemen, come down front, I'll read it.
He's got one on too.
Thank you.
Oh yeah, let me take the jacket off.
Try.
There we go, Scott, this is better.
Alrighty, Scott, why don't we read this resolution in its entirety, because it is, it was well-written. Patrick, where are you? The second time. Yeah, there's a funny story behind that, but a resident noticed a couple of typos, shall we call them? But they caught them. So you've got the corrected version.
Excellent.
This is Resolution number 3852-19. It's a resolution of the City of Oviedo, Florida, naming the University of Central Florida as the city's official hometown team. Establishing the requirement that a flag representing the University of Central Florida must be flown in front of the Oviedo City Hall on designated dates and at Twin Rivers Golf Course, providing for implementing administrative actions, severability, Scrivener errors, conflicts, and an effective date. Goes on to read where, whereas the City of Oviedo was incorporated in 1925 in Southern Seminole County with a population of just 800. We're almost 41,000 now. Thirty-eight years later, the University of Central Florida was founded June 10, 1963, as Florida Technological University on Alafera Trail near the border of Orange and Seminole Counties. Holding up okay there, Bob?
Yep.
Alrighty. Whereas the UCF main campus is located less than two miles from the southernmost border of the City of Oviedo, establishing it as the closest university to the City of Oviedo. This is an interesting point. Whereas on February 11, 1971, UCF then FDU celebrated its first homecoming basketball game at Oviedo High School Gymnasium. Was anybody here for that? Chief Coleman?
I just missed it.
Whereas neighborhoods such as Mead Manor, Garden Grove, and Alafera Woods began to take shape with the arrival of the facility, excuse me, of facility and staff from the university. And whereas since the university's founding students and alumni have offered their time and efforts to contribute to the City of Oviedo through employment, class projects, and voluntary activities, volunteer activities, pardon me. Whereas numerous student athletes at the University of Central Florida have participated in and been shaped by the City of Oviedo recreation programs and leagues, and we can name just a few of them, I am sure, Blake Bortles. Whereas various members of university administration, faculty, professional staff, and alumni have resided within the City of Oviedo. Right here. Whereas generations of families who reside in the City of Oviedo have attended the University of Central Florida, well, we saw that just earlier. Whereas based on the colest history between the University of Central Florida and the City of Oviedo, the Oviedo City Council desires to officially express their acknowledgement and admiration to the University of Central Florida. So now, therefore, be resolved, this is a long one, be it resolved by the City Council, the City of Oviedo, Florida, as follows. Declaration of Oviedo's Hometown University. The City Council hereby recognizes the University of Central Florida as Oviedo's Hometown University. Section two. Approval to fly a University of Central Florida flag, a flag representing the University of Central Florida or University of Central Florida Athletics shall be flown continually at the Twin Rivers Golf Course. And for those who don't know, we have a great partnership with UCF at the golf course. Their golf team has their practice facility there and uses the course. And in front of Oviedo City Hall within 24 hours of the start of each UCF football game and upon the request of the University of Central Florida Administration or Athletic Department. Section three. The City Manager is hereby authorized and directed to take such actions as he or she may deem necessary and appropriate in order to implement the provisions of this resolution. The City Manager may, as deemed appropriate, necessary, and convenient, delegate the powers of implementation as hereon set forth to such City employees as deemed effectual and prudent. Typographical errors, well, you already cleaned those up, and other matters of similar nature that do not affect the intent of this resolution, as determined by the City Clerk and the City Attorney, may be corrected. All resolutions or parts of resolutions in conflict with any of the provisions of this resolution are hereby repealed. If any section or portion of this section of this resolution proves to be invalid, unlawful, or unconstitutional, it shall not be held to invalidate or impair the validity, force, or effect of any section of this resolution. That sounds like something you added, Lonnie. This resolution shall become effective immediately upon its passage and adoption, which already occurred. It's been passed and adopted this 18th day of November, 2019. I've signed it, the city seal is here, the UCF flag shall fly. Congratulations. (Applause).
Why would the UCF lawn sign this?
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 So, this is the recognition. This is the recognition of the Oviedo High School Girls Bowling Team for 2019. They are the state championship, and they've won individual championships in 2019. I believe this is the fourth championship for this team in the last seven years. So these young ladies are very familiar with coming down here to City Hall, and we couldn't be prouder of them. Two team members made the all-conference team, and the team also won the Keighley High School Challenge on September 28th. They are just an amazing bunch of young ladies, they're talented, they are awesome to be around, they kick Steve and I's butt when they bowl against us all the time, but we don't mind, because they are great and they are academically just off the chart. So, let's give them a big round of applause. I'm gonna bring in their head coach first.[868.12][868.12](Applause). And I'll let Head Coach Zach Waters introduce all the girls and tell us a little bit about them. So, you took over the team from Pat?
Yes, sir.
Who was the coach of the team forever, as long as I can remember, and you still took them to a state champion?
Well, they took me to one.
Alrighty, well, there you go. Alrighty, Coach Hoopel, there you go.
Alright, I gotta take out my cellphone and look at some notes here, make sure I don't forget anything. Thank you to the City of Oviedo for having us here, especially on Dominic's last night, we really appreciate that, and we're very excited to be here. Alright, so, we're gonna go order here. First off, we have Bassett and Towell, who's a freshman.[917.12][917.12](Applause). Victoria Judson, who is a sophomore.[926.37][926.37](Applause). Geneviles, who's a junior.[934.12][934.12](Applause). Katie Holton, who is a senior.[942.12][942.12](Applause). And in bowling, you have five starters, so we're gonna have our five starters as the next group here in the order of lineups. So our first one is Jackie Gonzalez, who's a junior.[959.37][959.37](Applause). Franny Olay, who is a junior.[967.12][967.12](Applause). And Franny's twin sister, is that how it counts? Actually, triplets, but the other one's a boy, but Annie Olay, who's also a junior.[980.12][980.12](Applause). Justina Nielsen, who is a junior.[988.12][988.12](Applause). And before she comes out, we have our individual state champion, who is senior, Shawna Rogers.[1000.62][1000.62](Applause). So if I could take 30 more seconds, I just want to note a couple accomplishments. The team was 16-0 in the regular season, we're Seminole Athletic Conference Champions, district champions, individual female champion Shawna. Shawna, raise your hand one more time so they can all see, that's why she has two medals, because she won the individual state championship, as well as this team state championship. And lastly, this is the first female program to win a team state championship and also have an individual state champion on their team, so that is the first time that's happened in the state of Florida for bowling.[1042.83][1042.83](Applause).
Now ladies, when I was outside talking to you earlier, I learned that, how many of you, this is your first state championship? How many of you have two? How many of you have four? Congratulations, guys.[1065.12][1065.12](Applause). Why don't you come on up front here, we'll get a picture, we'll line everybody up. Parents, please, stand up, get in the middle, move around, you'll probably have to kind of get in front of each other, you know, come on now, you don't have to do the team pose.
You're good. You're good. No one can see me back here, but I'm here.
Ladies, congratulations. Thank you for coming down tonight.[1149.12][1149.12](Applause). Coach, great job. You can all go home and do homework now. Okay. Which one are you gonna do first? Who are you gonna do first? We're gonna go on to the next ceremonial item, which are recognition of myself and Councilman Hankin, but we're gonna do Councilman Hankin first. I'll turn it over to Mr. Cobb in just a moment.
Thank you, Mayor. As many of you know, tonight is Councilman Hankin's and Mayor Percampier's last meeting with us, or last official meeting with us. And so tonight, we have a few things that we'd like to send you off with. Not to say that we're happy to see you go, your long tenure, you have accomplished much as members of this body, and have given us great leadership through the years, and ones that we've always counted on you, you've always been there for us, and we want to say thank you for the many years of service that you've given to the citizens of Oviedo. And so I'd like to, we have a couple of resolutions, and we have a couple of other things for you as well. This is a resolution of the City of Oviedo, Florida honoring Councilmember Steve Hankin. Whereas Steve Hankin is being recognized for 15 years of dedicated service to the city as a Board of Adjustment member, Fire Pension Board member, Councilmember, and Deputy Mayor. Whereas the City of Oviedo commends Steve Hankin for his service to the community through his hard work and commitment to the residents of the City of Oviedo and the surrounding communities as a member of the Friends of Lake Jessup, and Altrit member to the Metroplan Municipal Advisory Committee. Whereas the City of Oviedo desires to recognize the accomplishments of this outstanding individual and to honor and express appreciation to him for being a respected and loyal member of the Oviedo City Council. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Oviedo, Florida, that the Mayor and City Council on behalf of the entire Oviedo community commend him for his great achievements and extraordinary effort, is with great appreciation and respect that we wish him continued success in your future endeavors. Presented this 18th day of November, 8th, 2019, and it is signed by all members of City Council. Well, except for you, of course.[1310.12][1310.12](Applause).
Mr. Kelly, could you come over?
Mr. Hankin, we also have to commemorate your tenure with the city. It says, has a copy and a seal, and it says, "In appreciation of 15 years of service,
My family's all here tonight, I'm looking through, get some pictures for us.
Great.
Well, as I stated before, we do have another leader leaving us tonight. So I'd like to read a resolution here for Mayor Dominic Percampier. It's a resolution of the City of Oviedo, Florida honoring Mayor Dominic Percampier. Whereas Dominic Percampier is being recognized for 20 years of dedicated service to the city as a land planning agency member, City Councilmember, and Mayor. Whereas the City of Oviedo commends Dominic Percampier for his service to the community through his hard work and commitment to the residents of the City of Oviedo and the surrounding communities as a member of the Oviedo/Wintersprings Chamber of Commerce, Mayors and Managers, Seminole County Chamber of Commerce, Envision Seminole, Leadership Board of Directors, Public School Facilities Planning Committee, UCF Foundation Board, Tri-County League of Cities, Florida League of Cities, and Metroplan Municipal Advisory Committee. Whereas the City of Oviedo desires to recognize the accomplishments of this outstanding individual and to honor and express appreciation to him for being respected and a loyal member of the Oviedo City Council. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Oviedo, Florida, that the Deputy Mayor and City Council on behalf of the entire Oviedo community commend Mayor Dominic Percampier for his great achievements and extraordinary effort, is with great appreciation and respect that we wish him continued success in his future endeavors, and it's signed by the members of the council.[1569.12][1569.12](Applause). We also have one other thing for you. And Mrs. Mayor, you may enjoy this. Every time he steps out online. We have a special gavel.[1597.87][1597.87](Laughter). Says to Mayor Dominic Percampier, 20 years of service. I want to present that to you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Chief just told me that this is the West.[1619.12][1619.12](Laughter). Alright, for 20 years, well, somebody thought you were doing this.[1633.12][1633.12](Laughter). Why don't you become the son-in-law, you're part of the family. Even though he's a Patriots fan, what's the point? Yeah, who said boo?
Mayor, could you just hold on one more second? If you, Mr. Hankin, could please join me? Carolyn Dahl, a local Oviedo artist, painted those for us. And so, we'd like to present those to you so that you'll always remember the great accomplishment that we all pulled together and made happen. That was a team effort, Brian. This whole, all 20 years, it's been a team effort. You know, not, there isn't one individual that can make all of this happen. It takes multitudes of council members. There's five of us standing up here now. There's at least 15 or 20 that I've sat with who aren't with us this evening. Steve and I have been together 14 years up here, 15 years up here. You know, it's been one heck of a ride. And for you guys to go out and do this, I mean, Brian, that's just very special. And I just want to say thank you to everybody. Thank you to all the residents who elected us all these years, you know, because it's your city, not our city. We just have a lot of fun making the decisions. So, thank you to everyone, and I'm sure Steve might have a word or two. And Steve, it's been my honor to sit here with you.
Amen, brother. Well, I just told Deputy Mayor, this is actually much harder than getting sworn in. And I've told especially Judith, I said, "When you get sworn in, it's such a nerve-wracking thing." But, you know, there really is, there's not enough time to thank everybody, but I'll say, "Brian, there's the best city manager this city has ever seen. It's been a pleasure working with him. This guy over here has always kept us straight. Ronnie's a great guy, he really is. Always watched out for us, made sure that we were all good." You know, many of you know, the tough image is not always there when I speak about family and everything. And I will tell you, there's so many to thank. All these great directors through the years, been great council members that you miss, although we'll be hanging out, right? El House, all that stuff, so that'll be good. But, you know, it started like a little.
It's one of two places to leave.
Right, it started like a little bit of a funeral, but just in closing, all the staff, you guys made us look so good. I want to thank the Oviedo Police Department. You guys stood with us every step of the way. The Oviedo Fire Department could not have done it without them, so you guys are all amazing. So, I'm gonna go, we got an agenda to do. I also want to thank, before I close, my family, they're all here tonight. Just. Always there when you need them, especially my mom, 87 years old, here she is, came out tonight for us, so that's good. And my dad, he's ill, but he is watching, so, Pop, we love you. I gotta stop, let's go do some work, but give us a round so I can stop this, please. Thank you, everyone. We're gonna take a little bit of a break, we'll take a five or a 10-minute recess and then we'll reconvene and, you know, we, Steve and I just don't know what to say, we don't know who to thank first. You know, like I said earlier, I got my whole family, my dad's here with us, his wife, Mary. I mean, this is, this is just special, so.
You just got a little overwhelmed.
And actually, and there's my second mom, so. All righty, and I know my mom's at home watching right now, she's not feeling well tonight, so, thank you, everyone. (APPLAUSE). (END OF TRANSCRIPT)
Well, as I stated before, we do have another leader leaving us tonight. So, I'd like to read a resolution here for Mayor Dominic Percampier. It's a resolution of the City of Oviedo, Florida honoring Mayor Dominic Percampier. Whereas Dominic Percampier is being recognized for 20 years of dedicated service to the city as a land planning agency member, City Councilmember, and Mayor. Whereas the City of Oviedo commends Dominic Percampier for his service to the community through his hard work and commitment to the residents of the City of Oviedo and the surrounding communities as a member of the Oviedo-Winters Springs Chamber of Commerce, Mayors and Managers, Seminole County Chamber of Commerce, Envision Seminole, Leadership Board of Directors, Public School Facilities Planning Committee, UCF Foundation Board, Tri-County League of Cities, Florida League of Cities, and Metro Plan Municipal Advisory Committee. Whereas the City of Oviedo desires to recognize the accomplishments of this outstanding individual and to honor and express appreciation to him for being respected and a loyal member of the Oviedo City Council. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Oviedo, Florida, that the Deputy Mayor and City Council on behalf of the entire Oviedo community commend Mayor Dominic Percampier for his great achievements and extraordinary effort. Is with great appreciation and respect that we wish him continued success in his future endeavors, and it's signed by the members of the council. We also have one other thing for you. And Mrs. Mayor, you may enjoy this. Every time he steps out online. We have a special gavel. Says, "To Mayor Dominic Percampier, 20 years of service." I want to present that to you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
She just told me that this is the West. All right, for 20 years, well, somebody thought you were doing this damn thing. None of this is possible without. What years of doing this is possible without buying. (INAUDIBLE). What years of doing this is possible without buying. (INAUDIBLE). Why don't you become the son-in-law, you're part of the family. Even though he's a Patriots fan, what's the point? Yeah, who said boo? Raise your hand if you boo back, 'cause I love you.
Mayor, could you just hold on one more second? If you, Mr. Hinckin, could please join me? We've got one more thing for you. Seeing and hearing none, I'm going to close the public comment portion, move on to the consent agenda. The consent agenda now does not include item number nine, but it is items five through 19. What is the pleasure of council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda, minus number nine, as you pointed out, everything else as presented.
Second? We have a motion, we have a second. Councilman Hinckin, you have the floor.
Nope, everything looks great.
Awesome. Who is my second? We'll give it to Deputy Mayor. I think you'd be chief.
No, it looks great. You know, we've got some great new buildings coming in and more business and, you know, there's a, you know, just a ton of stuff on this consent agenda that's just, you know, really great for Oviedo.
Excellent. Councilman Chet now?
All looks good.
All looks good. Councilman Britton?
I'm good, thank you.
I just want to point out that we have the bid award in here for the Regional Stormwater Pond and Park, so that is moving along in the old downtown or the historic downtown behind the Community Center Building, so Bobby, great job on that. And we also have the renaming of that park is on here as Solari Park, I believe, correct? So, I think that is great because that is paying homage to the history of Oviedo with the wharf and all, so I think you can do a lot of things with that in the future, Bobby, with all the water features and, well, Chris, I'm sure you'll design a whole bunch of stuff for it, so, we really do appreciate it. Is there anything else from the council before I call the question? Motion on the table is to adopt the consent agenda as presented. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Let me just catch up and then we'll move on. All righty, we're up to item number 20, which is ordinance number 1688. Mr. Group, can you read this one by title only, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. An ordinance to the City of Oviedo granting to Florida Power and Light Company and its successors and assigns a non-exclusive electric franchise, providing for monthly franchise fee payments to the city providing for and imposing provisions, procedures, and conditions relating thereto, providing for identification, maintenance of books and records, the right to audit by the city, and other terms and conditions relating to the franchise and the rights and obligations relating thereto, providing for a most favored nation's covenant protecting the city, providing for the imposition of restrictions on the city competing by selling electricity, providing for the authority of the city to generate electricity to transmit between city facilities, providing for forfeiture of the franchise, providing for severability, providing for contest, providing for codification, as well as the correction of scrutiny errors, and providing for an effective date. That's the ordinance by title, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Group. Mr. Cobb?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a request from council to approve an ordinance which will extend the electric services franchise granted by the city to Florida Power and Light. Current franchise was adopted in 1990 under ordinance number 784. The current term is effective through March 26, 2020. This ordinance will grant a new franchise, providing for the payment of franchise fees to the city in exchange for a non-exclusive right and privilege of supplying electricity and other services within the city, free of competition from the city pursuant to the terms and conditions of the ordinance. The part for this ordinance, FPL agrees to pay the city an amount equal to 6% of FPL's billed revenues from the sale of electrical energy to residential, commercial, and institutional customers. The city, as Mr. Group mentioned, the city has granted a most favored nation status, which means that if FPL negotiates an agreement with a local government located in Seminole County, Volusia County, Gravert County, Orange County, or Lake County, and the terms or the revenues are greater than what we have in our franchise, then upon our request, they would have to renegotiate our franchise and make those new provisions part of it. The term of this franchise is for 30 years, which will be sometime in 2049. The council conducted first reading at its November 4 meeting. The motion to schedule this public hearing did have a few items that the council asked about. One was to add language reinstating the city's ability to purchase the utility at the end of the current franchise, at the end of the franchise. And that language has been added back into the ordinance. Another was to add language to establish an annual base revenue amount. That was not, we were not able to do that. The way it was explained was that the revenues that are generated within the franchise come from the area that covers the franchise, and so, with a minimum revenue amount, if it were to fall below, then the revenues would have to come from a different area, and they're not allowed to do that by state law. We also asked, there was a request for information on the, oh, that the city would receive electricity from renewable sources. The term was solar by wire. The way that it was, this was not able to be done, but the way it was explained was that they can't guarantee which plant the electricity's coming from, but they do have one of the most aggressive programs as far as going from providing electricity through renewable sources. There was a request to renew the term to 12 years, or 2032. From their perspective, they invest, their investments in the franchise territory are long-term, 30- to 40-year investments, so they need the 30 or 40 years so that they can see a return on their investments. We also asked for info- would have to renegotiate our franchise and make those new provisions part of it. The term of this franchise is for 30 years, which will be sometime in 2049. The council conducted first reading at its November 4th meeting. The motion to schedule this public hearing did require— did have a few items that the council asked about. One was to add language reinstating the city's ability to purchase the utility at the end of the current franchise— at the end of the franchise. And that language has been added back into the ordinance. Another was to add language to establish an annual base revenue amount. That was not—we were not able to do that. The way it was explained was that the revenues that are generated within the franchise come from the area that covers the franchise, and so with a minimum revenue amount, if it were to fall below, then the revenues would have to come from a different area, and they're not allowed to do that by state law. We also asked— there was a request for information on the— oh, that the city would receive electricity from renewable sources. The term was solar by wire. The way that it was— this was not able to be done, but the way it was explained was that they can't guarantee which plant the electricity's coming from, but they do have one of the most aggressive programs as far as going from— providing electricity through renewable sources. There was a request to renew the term to 12 years, or 2032. From their perspective, they invest— their investments in the franchise territory are long-term, 30- to 40-year investments, so they need the 30 or 40 years so that they can see a return on their investments. We also asked for information regarding the Solar Together program and the On-Demand On-Call Service Program. Those—the information was provided, and they were also—the information was attached in 3 and 4, to your agenda memorandum. It's projected that the city's annual franchise fees under this new agreement will increase approximately $20,338 per year to $341,160. It's recommended that council conduct a public hearing and adopt ordinance number 1688.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. I see representatives here from FPL. Do you have anything to add? Not at this time? All righty. If we need some information, we'll call you up. What is the— let's see, public hearing? I'd like to open up the public hearing on ordinance number 1688. Is there anybody in the audience who'd like to address council at this time? Seeing and hearing none, I'll close the public portion of this meeting and move on to the pleasure of council.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Make a motion to pass ordinance number 1688?
Second.
We have a motion, and we have a second. Deputy Mayor, you have the floor.
No, it looks good. I'm glad we added the language back, so that the— a future council will have that opportunity 30 years from now. As for the solar program, I look forward to getting more information on the Solar Together program when you get all that put together, and we can bring that back to us, and we can look for the city to add to our renewable portfolio so that we can meet our renewable goals in the future. Everything else looks good. I would have loved to just have the 12-year term, but I completely understand.
Thank you. I'll give Councilman Chet now that second.
I'm good with it.
You're good. Councilman Henkin?
I just want to say, having—as I said at the last meeting, having been a customer for so long out there and following you guys, because I'm sort of in that industry, not electric, but in cable. So I kind of—you were always 12 inches above me, so I always got to see it. But—
You hope it was above you.
You just have to make sure you stay away from it, you know? 90 volts and 18,000 volts, a lot different, you know? But, you know, that solar program, I was, you know, reading about all these, you know, millions of panels you guys are buying. FPL's got it going on, and I would just say, you know, we won't be here, and the people that got elected probably will not be here, but I've never been a fan of cities owning electric utilities. Maybe other things they can dabble in, but it's not an easy—it's not an easy thing, and when you have somebody that does it so well and is willing to work with you, as you have. So I hope your next 30 years are as good as the last 30, so we appreciate it. Thanks.
Councilman Britton?
I'm good. I just want to give a context here. I think— Lynda, maybe you can help me out here. I think Florida Power has a solar farm at Kennedy Space Center that I think produces over 10 megawatts, that goes into the grid over at KSE that—we don't turn back the meters, but the facilities use that electricity, and that lowers the overall amount coming through the meter that we pay for. So there's a lot going on. You've got those plants all over the place, so I think that's the— what we need to do for the way for the future, so keep it up.
Great. I just want to appreciate you answering all of our questions from two weeks ago to the best of your ability. We—I like the idea of the shorter term as well, but I will acquiesce on that one. But great job, and thank you so much. Any other questions from the council? Motion on the table is to adopt ordinance number 1688. All in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. First reading of ordinances, we have none, so we're going to move on to item number 22, which is resolution number 3861-19. It is a site development order, number 508-19, for Oviedo on the Park, Lot B. Mr. Cobb, we'll turn it over to you.
Actually, Mayor, I'm going to have Dr. Correa come up and make the presentation tonight.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council members. This is a request for the city council to approve site development order number 508-19 for Lot 3B at Oviedo on the Park. The proposed development is located on the north side of Microbetway, the west side of Citywalk Lane, and the south side of Center Lake Lane. The applicant and property owner is Michael Collard of OOTP LLC. The total land area of the site is approximately 1.04 acres. The project includes two commercial buildings to include general retail and restaurants with two semi-public courtyards and adjacent private outdoor seating areas, including a rooftop seating area on Building B. And the two buildings are the Food Factory and Sanford Brewing Company. Staff is currently reviewing the building plans for both buildings, and while doing the review for the building plans, we found a discrepancy between the square footage of the building plans and what was described in the site plan. And that's because building services calculate the rooftop seating area as square footage, and the site plan did not reflect that. The site plan that we—that you reviewed, and we reviewed, and we are proposing here is not being impacted. It was just the way the square footage was calculated. So instead of having a total square footage of 19,406 square feet, it's actually 21,239 square feet. And that—in the motion, we are going to recommend that this correction be accepted, that staff can do the correction to the site plan and to the SGO. The applicant is requesting six deviations from the LDC minimum requirements. The deviations are needed because the geometry of the site is challenging. It's a triangular shape. One deviation is for the setback to the south of the property, but it's not even going. It's a partial setback deviation, because it doesn't require the whole building, just a portion of the building. And all the five other deviations are related to landscape, landscape buffer width, island trees. All deviations were justified and mitigated. There was also— wanted to point out that deviation number 2, which is a 5-foot deviation to the required minimum 10-foot landscape buffer yard with a longer vehicles used area on Microbetway, allowing a 5-foot landscape buffer yard should be a 50% deviation, not a 40% deviation, as described here. We're going to correct that as well. The project requires three mobility strategies for the comprehensive plan due to the traffic generation, and the applicant proposes a payment to the city mobility fund in the amount of $8,441.16 in lieu of installing the following mobility strategies on the site. One bicycle repair station, one five-bicycle bike rack, and that will be in addition to what is required by the LDC, and one ride-share drop-off area. The architectural design orders for both buildings were already approved by city council in August and September, and there is no budget, no impact to the budget as a result of the proposed site development order approval. And it's recommended that city council adopt resolution number 3861-19 with the two corrections described by staff, and one will be that the total square footage of the two buildings is 21,239 square feet, and deviation number 2 is actually 50%, not 40%. And I— with that, I conclude my presentation, and I'm here to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions for Dr. Correa?
No, thank you.
All righty, I have no written requests to speak on this, or anybody in the audience who would like to address council? Seeing and hearing none, I'll close the public comment portion and move on to the pleasure of council.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Make a motion to approve resolution 3861-19?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. The motion includes the two corrections as made by Dr. Correa?
Yes.
Second, are you agree?
Agreed.
Deputy Mayor, you have the floor.
It looks good. You know, we're filling it out, finishing it up, and the park's looking good, and I can't wait to sit on top of the loft area and have a beer over at Oviedo Brewing— I'm sorry, Sanford Brewing.
Anything else? Councilman Britton?
I'm good. Good presentation, Teresa.
Councilman Henkin?
Teresa, thanks for tying up all those problems. You make it easy, as I was trying to get through out there, but I'm better now. You make us look good, you know? And stuff like that is— well, we have a great staff, and that project will come out good, and I'll bewitch up in that rooftop. Is it going to change?
Drinking a Diet Coke?
No.
Councilman Chet now?
It's just nice to see the area getting the rest of the buildings and getting finished up.
Great. Well, I see the applicants out, the audience. Does anybody want to come on up and tell us everything exciting that's coming into what we're about to approve, or do we not want to do that?
A little later.
All righty, a little later. Well, as most—
Look, you can go to our website, it's all there.
As most of you know, this is the area that's known as Food Factory, where they'll have six or eight micro restaurants. Eight micro restaurants, some retail. Sanford Brewing is coming on the northern end, two-story, upstairs patio overlooking Center Lake. So it's quite exciting what's going to be done here, and this is— and if I'm speaking out of turn, just let me know, but I think you want to have everything up by sometime the end of next year. Is that the goal? Third quarter, fourth quarter?
So into third quarter, Food Factory, the rest of the four.
So we've got about third quarter. We should see the Food Factory up. Ford's Garage is already under construction and the whole front point, so Michael, Ruth, your entire team, awesome job finishing it out, and it's going to be exciting to see the breathe across the street and what happens over there, and even a possible parking structure. So that'll be great to see. Any other questions from the council? Motion on the table is to adopt resolution 3861-19. All in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Go forth and build the Food Factory.
Thank you.
Our pleasure, thank you. All righty, next item up is item number 23. It is resolution number 3862-19. This is the Geneva Drive realignment agreement, and this one's pretty exciting. I don't think folks realize the impact this one will have, but I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Cobb for introduction, and then we'll go on to the property owner and council discussion.
Madeline, could you pull up the PowerPoint, please? Council, this was a— as Mayor put it correctly, this is— this is one of the— probably one of the most important things we're going to do as far as redevelopment of our downtown. And I know it's something that—the redevelopment of the downtown's something that has been discussed since I came on the staff in 1995, and this is a— this is a major, major accomplishment. This agreement that's before you tonight is to do basically a land swap. You can see the area in red, that is the realigned Geneva Drive right-of-way. That is the right-of-way that the city will be taking over. And then the areas that are in yellow are the roadways, the part of Geneva Drive and parts of railroad streets that the city will be vacating and conveying as part of this. And there's also a portion of railroad street that's on this map that the city's not going to vacate, but we're going to—we're going to ask DOT to give it back to us. We needed it to them, we're going to ask them to give it back to us, and then we'll convey that on to the property owners as well. And this is all part of what was envisioned in 2002 and 2003 when we adopted our downtown master plan. Madeline, if we could move on to the next one. We've been working on this agreement since about January, February. Is that about right, David, when we first started, about January, February? And this agreement does a number of things. It provides for the acquisition of the right-of-way and the conveyance of the current right-of-ways, but it also has a discussion about the issuance and use of transportation impact because credits. There's cost-sharing agreements, because now that we're shifting the road over to the east, we're going to be creating an intersection— full intersection now at Geneva Drive rather than the current three-legged intersection. And so we're going to have—we're looking at cost-sharing with the property owners for the intersection improvements, and then also for the stormwater improvements that we're going to be putting in as well, and that'll be inside that right-of-way. There's a— there's an agreement for the allocation of stormwater capacity within the regional stormwater pond. There's a wastewater easement that has to be— has to be executed, because we currently have sewer lines within the current Geneva Drive and railroad street east right-of-ways, and so once they become private property, then we'll need an easement there so that we can continue to maintain them. And we also talk about downtown master plan update, which all of you know are—is underway, comp plan amendments that are going to be based on the downtown master plan update, land development code amendments, which will be based on the comp plan amendments, and then obviously, finally, development— redevelopment of the parcels of the master land use plan and the development agreement. Madeline, if we could go to the next one. There's going to be two closings, and the reason we're doing this is so that at the initial closing, the realigned Geneva Drive will be conveyed to the city, but the existing Geneva Drive and the railroad street will stay as public right-of-ways. And so that way, we can get the realigned Geneva Drive into the State Route 426, County Road 419, Phase 2 widening project. Once that's done, once the roadway's done and it's open to the public, then we'll vacate Geneva Drive and railroad street, and that's what the second closing's for, is for us to do the vacation and to execute the sewer agreement. Can we go to the next one, Madeline? This is just discussing what our—the different obligations of the property owners and as well as the city, the property owners to convey the Geneva Drive right-of-way, as well as grant the sewer easement, and then also they'll be obtaining an environmental survey along the region— the realigned Geneva Drive right-of-way. And they'll also be doing a Phase 2 environmental survey if the Phase 1 recommends it. The city's obligations are to vacate Geneva Drive and railroad street, also to construct the realigned Geneva Drive. Can you have the next one, please? We also have some things in here. There's one thing about— at 110 Geneva Drive, there's currently a convenience store with gasoline pumps, and so there's also— part of this agreement is to provide vested rights so that that store can remain on that— that use can still remain eligible on that property. Also, we will—we agree to design the intersection of County Road 419 and Geneva Drive as a four-legged intersection, as well as drainage system improvements within it, that's in accordance with the drainage easement agreement. And then the city will provide for the demolition of 149 East Broadway Street, as well as 110 Geneva Drive, which are two buildings that are currently within the realigned right-of-way. Now, there's a number of things that we're going to be cooperating on. These aren't all of them, but these are the ones that I felt were the major ones that I wanted to discuss with you tonight. Ensuring that Sweetwater Creek continues to function as a floodway, facilitating the relocation of Sweetwater Creek, if you remember, as part of our regional pond, and part that we're going to relocate Geneva— Sweetwater Creek around the pond so that we— and rather than having it go through its current realignment. We're also in discussions about a new east-west roadway that'll connect 434 to Geneva Drive, somewhere in the area—the old Big Johns, you might say, headed over in the north side of the post office, in between the post office and the park. And what this will do, we're looking at designing it as a urban street, so it'll have sidewalks, it'll have on-street parking, it'll provide for the parking. I wish Mr. Slattery was here, because he's always concerned about everyone parking at the bank, and this will help alleviate some of those concerns. The downtown—as I mentioned before, the downtown master plan update, it's already underway with Javier Omana of CPH and Dick's— and Chris Height, Dick's Height, working with the graduate students from the University of Florida. Comprehensive plan amendments, we've actually structured the agreement so that everything falls into chronological place as far as doing the downtown master plan update, which will provide the supporting data for comprehensive plan amendments, which then will provide for land development code amendments that have to be consistent with that, and then obviously with the master plan and the development agreement, that we will continue to work together. Madeline, if we could go to the next slide. We also built in some flexibility into this agreement. We've had some issues with the legal descriptions for the different parcels, and also the right-of-ways within this area. Anytime you're dealing with railroads, things tend to get moved around, and DOT also tends to move things around, and so there's going to be some adjustments to those legal descriptions, as well as there's going to be some adjustments to the anticipated— with Javier Omana, CPH, and Dick's, and Chris Height, Dick's Height, working with the graduate students from the University of Florida. Comprehensive plan amendments, we've, we've actually structured the agreement so that everything falls into chronological place as far as doing the downtown master plan update, which will provide the supporting data for comprehensive plan amendments, which then will provide for land development code amendments that have to be consistent with that and then obviously with the master plan and the development agreement that we will continue to work together. Madeline, if we could go to the next slide. We also built in some flexibility into this agreement. We've had some issues with the legal descriptions for the different parcels and also the right-of-ways within this area. Anytime you're dealing with railroads, things tend to get moved around and DOT also tends to move things around and so there's going to be some adjustments to those legal descriptions as well as there's going to be some adjustments to the anticipated plan amendments and code amendments. And one of the things that we did put in there into the agreement was that if the downtown master plan doesn't necessarily recommend the, what's in the agreement, but it's closed and every, and the parties, all the parties involved say, yes, this is where we want to go, then we'll proceed. We don't have to amend this agreement in order to proceed with those, those recommended amendments. The purchase price, because of the legal description is going to be changing, the purchase price probably is going to change as well. And so we set a, we set a limit at 20% that we can handle administratively up to a 20% change. This falls in line with the staff's deviation authority, so we felt we're recommending that. We can mutually, there's various timeframes based on when we execute the agreement, when we have a closing, when we, when we have, when the downtown master plan update is done. There's various deadlines that we've placed on ourselves and so we can mutually extend those up to 12 months without having to amend the agreement. We also put a special section, 5.1.3, 13, 5.1.13, which gives that, which describes all of that flexibility, especially ones where, that we're dealing with recommendations of the downtown master plan, conference plan amendments, land development code amendments and the, as well. We go to the next slide. One of the things that we learned through this process is that the value of the property of the realigned right-of-way is greater than the value of the right-of-ways that are being vacated. And so through that, that calculation, we came out with a purchase price of $411,395.19, which is the difference between the two, the two parcels. One of the things that I would like to call to your attention is up on the top of the slide is that this is going to, this is going to be paid for through the issuance of multimodal transportation impact fee credits. Can we go to the next slide, please? Part of the agreement is an impact fee credit agreement to, to discuss the issuance and the use of those impact fee credits. And one of the things that, just to call to your attention, a couple of things, is that the city would recognize the impact fee credits of the existing buildings and this is one of the things that we normally do. Anytime there's an existing use and there's a change of use on property, we will discount the required impact fees based on the use that was in there prior. And so 149 East Broadway Street with the, with the retail building and then as well as with 110 Geneva Drive and the convenience store, though we have accounted for those square footages as far as the calculation of the impact fees. If the DOT, I mentioned before on the first slide, there was a portion of Railroad Street that we conveyed to DOT and now they, we need to get them to convey it back to us. If they convey it back to us, we can reduce the impact fee credits by $37,423. If we meet our goals that are in Exhibits E, F, G, and H, as far as the downtown mixed use, the downtown master plan update, the conference plan update, the land development code amendments and the master plan, if we can meet those goals or come to a consensus together on what is recommended in the downtown master plan update, we can reduce the credits by $200,000. The credits can be utilized against any multimodal transportation impact fees for development within the C District and the CRA. Madeline, if we could go to the next. And the property owners are allowed to apply the credits to any of the properties that they own throughout the city and they can also transfer the credits to any properties within the C District or within the CRA. The reason we focused on that is that the C District and the CRA is the area that we're wanting to focus our economic development efforts on. If we go to the next, next, please. There's a cost-sharing agreement. The cost-sharing agreement covers a couple of things. Like I mentioned before, the property owners will reimburse us for incremental costs for the south leg of the intersection of Geneva Drive and County Road 419. There's also, we're upsizing, they're also going to reimburse for upsizing the drainage facilities within the realigned Geneva Drive right-of-way. That is so that we can capture the drainage from the south side of County Road 419 and take it toward the regional stormwater pond and also for any additional drainage structures that need to go into the south side. And then the reimbursement, they can also, the property owners can also use their impact fee credits as part of that reimbursement. Madeline, if we could go to the next one. We have a drainage easement agreement. And what this is, this is, this agreement basically memorializes what's out, the capacity allocation that's out there now. FDOT obviously has capacity in the pond for 434 and 426. The property owners currently have a stormwater structure behind the post office and so that capacity is being shifted to the, to the original stormwater pond, counts for that. The city's, the city's capacity for Franklin Street, the realigned Geneva Drive, the post office, the regional stormwater park, our Solory Park, excuse me, those, the city's allocation for that, obviously the county's allocation for County Road 419. And then we talk about what's left over and that's for the, the properties to the south of County Road 419 and then other properties within the basin. If you go to the next, next slide, please. The wastewater easement, obviously this will be part of the initial, this will be part of the second closing. As I mentioned before, we have infrastructure in the Geneva Drive right-of-way. Once we vacate the right-of-way, it'll become private property. This easement will provide for us to continue to maintain that infrastructure. It also gives the property owners the opportunity to move the, to move the easement and the infrastructure if they need it for the use of the property. And as I mentioned before, we have downtown master plan update, we have comprehensive plan amendments, land development code amendments, master plan, and Madeline, if we could go to the next slide. This is the goals for the downtown master plan update. Like I said once before, we're, we've established these as goals, but we haven't, we haven't gone to the graduate students and said, you have to do this. We're giving them their own license of creativity. Basically, the way this is, is to create an urban downtown, much similar to the, what we did for the new downtown in Oviedo on the Park. You can look at our, you'll see a lot of these things are repeated as through, as through the comprehensive plan amendments, land development code amendments, as well as the master planning. One of the things we'll tell you about is that, as I mentioned before, the new downtown permissible uses, densities, intensities, setbacks, open space, encouraging mixed use, not requiring it. And that's one of the things that goes, starts with our comprehensive plan. There's a statute that says if you say something's mixed use, you have to set a percentage. And so we're going to try to find a way to work within that statute so that we can encourage it and not require it. It's been very difficult to implement that and right now we require certain percentages of residential and commercial, but one of the things that doesn't take into account is that you can have mixed use and have office and commercial and not have residential. And so that's the one thing where we think the statute does fall short. Also, as we mentioned before, one of the things we, with making this more like the new downtown, bringing introduction to entertainment uses within the, in the old downtown and so providing for the same exemption of noise, noise ordinance. Madeline, if we could go to the next, next slide. Once again, as I mentioned before, this is, the goal is to create the old downtown in a way with densities and intensities that are similar to Oviedo on the Park, understanding that this is a different area, the lot structure's different, there's different environmental concerns than we had with Oviedo on the Park. Oviedo on the Park was more of a blank slate that we had to work with. In this case, we're not working with something like that, but it's something that we're, we said we'll set this as our goal, but if the downtown master plan, when it comes back and it has a different type of urban environment, then we know that we, if we have consensus, we'll go forward with it. Same types of things as far as densities, intensities and, you know, and as far as mixed use is concerned. If we go to the next slide, please. One of the unique things about our downtown is that we have two zoning districts. We have the historic district core and historic district perimeter. One of the things that I asked for was that I would like to have one zoning district for the new downtown, have it be reflective of what's in the, the master plan update as well as the old downtown subarea of the downtown master plan. Once again, same goals to introduce into the old downtown, things that we have in the new downtown village core district as well as Oviedo on the Park. Madeline, if we could go to the next slide. Then the master land use plan development agreement, Exhibit G within your agreement identifies the parcels that would be incorporated into the master land use plan. As you can see, like I said, I'm not going to repeat, repeat all these, the same goals that we have for the others. We'd like to tell you a little bit about, as well, even establishing a higher maximum height of 65 feet is probably the big one there, but as well as the design standards, that's something we'll be looking at as far as the downtown master plan update. Madeline, if we could go to, this is the last slide, thankfully. Our recommendation is to adopt, you can go on to the next one, please. Recommendation is to adopt Resolution Number 3862-19 and available to address, Mr. Grude and I are available to address any questions and I want to say a special thank you to Mr. Axel because he's been a huge, huge help through this entire process.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. Mr. Axel, do you have anything to add?
My name is David Axel with Axel Real Estate, 1757 West Broadway Street, Suite 1 here in Oviedo. I worked with Mr. Cobb, Mr. Grude, Mr. Wyatt, Teresa also on this for quite some time. Even though there's a lot of whereas's and therefor's and so forth, the crux of this agreement is that the two words together work together. This is the beginning of a long process. You did already, at the CRA, we funded the downtown master plan update, the beginning of that, but this is the beginning of a long process to facilitate the redevelopment as a true urban core, this section of Oviedo, which is smaller than Oviedo on the Park, but will probably take quite a bit of time to get done because we've got to incentivize redevelopment of existing properties that have existing tenants. So it's going to be a long process. Oviedo on the Park, I believe the first agreement with the property owners was 1998. Here we are 21 years later, congratulating the owner of the last part of that for bringing that closer to completion. I expect this area may take just as long. Hopefully, I'm still working on this to see it and I'm here to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Axel. Any questions for Mr. Axel right out of the box? I have no request to speak forms on this item. Anybody want to address council? Seeing and hearing none, I'll close the public comment portion and move on to council motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Make a motion to adopt Resolution 3862-19.
Second. We have a motion, we have a second and Counselor Henkin will start with you.
I can remember very early on when I got elected, sitting with, with Harlan Hansen and some of the other stakeholders talking about this and as Mr. Axel just said, this is something that's just going to take some time to do, but it's so needed. You know, the details that have gone into this and we're not even like there yet, I mean, we're there, but we're not there. It's really going to be an incredible project, especially when that whole, that whole downtown is all done, kind of is a missing puzzle piece to, to everything we've done so far. So there's a lot of information up there. Future council members, I saw you taking your notes, you're going to need it. But we're off to a good start with that, Dave. Thank you so much. Harlan, if he was here, I'd thank him for laying that all out for me years ago, so we're on our way. So, good.
Counselor Britt?
Well, that's a lot to absorb, Brian. It was a pretty good presentation. I kind of agree with Counselor Henkin. I'm more excited about the, the potential for the area we're talking about than we did for Oviedo on the Park. I think it could be really a, a great, great amenity for the city. It's going to take a long time, but now's the time to start working on it.
Great. Counselor Judd now?
I'd have to agree with everybody. It's nice to see that area being redeveloped and, and creating a, a better traffic flow through downtown area.
Anything else you, Deputy Mayor?
No, I think this is, you know, kind of the, the big piece of the puzzle on the north end of the city. This is something that everybody's been wanting for a long time is to get the, the historic area, you know, redeveloped over there. You're kind of waiting on the road project and everything. Just had one question though, on the gas station. Are the tanks still on the ground of the gas station?
We're working on getting the current tenant out by the end of this month and my understanding from talking to our environmental consultants is we either have to fill them with concrete or remove them from the ground. They're not actually in the right-of-way that'll be realigned Geneva Drive, they're between the canopy, which will be removed, and the buildings. My recommendation is going to be to remove them because of future redevelopment. So I expected them to be gone.
Who's going to be responsible for any environmental mitigation?
The property owner, the property owner, the way we structured it. So the, the basis of the values was, in essence, clean property. So that's what's going to be delivered.
Perfect. Thank you.
That it?
That's it. Well, it's been, as, as already has been mentioned, I mean, this was first envisioned back when we had the charrettes and the meetings and the downtown master plan study, that eventually we would get to this point and that point is here. You know, there's many pieces to the puzzle. You know, over the years, there's been a lot of work that's gone into this by many that folks just don't realize. You know, not only our staff, but planners, consultants, this has all been churning and in the works. This agreement that's before us this evening is very, very similar to what the original agreement was for Oviedo on the Park. It kind of just laid out everything so that the property owners and it's similar property owners involved understood what was expected of them and the city understood what was expected of us because it is a public-private partnership in order to make this come into fruition. It's exciting to see the pieces of the puzzle coming together. The, the city is a city. You know, we, we've had this discussion many times and I'll say it on the last night that I am here for a full meeting, that, you know, you live in a city. It's going to develop over the next 20 years into an even better city. You know, it's, it's going to become an urban area. There's always been this plan to not only connect those areas, but to connect this area right here where we're all sitting this evening, City Hall, all the way on up to Magnolia, Franklin, into that area, in the rectangle of Oviedo Boulevard and State Road 434. It's one of the first things we talked about 20 some odd years ago when I was first elected here and even on LPA when Keith and I were there, it was being discussed, as Mr. Axel said, one of the first agreements was 1998. So within the district, what's exciting to see and just as we're starting to see at Oviedo on the Park, there's additional connectors for traffic starting to come into play. We have Wood Street being connected at Oviedo on the Park over to 434. It'll give another exit out of Oviedo on the Park. Up in the historic downtown area, they're talking of connector roads between Geneva and 434 behind the shopping plaza, as well as the students at UF are looking at the eventual connection of Franklin all the way through Lake Jessup. That's something else that's in the master plan. So, you know, as campaigns go on this, this last season, you know, and, and I hear things about, you know, reckless abandonment up here, all this, just this nonsense that I hear. You know, it, it, it troubles and bothers me because I know all the work that's actually being done. I know all of the time that's being expended by not only Mr. Axel for his clients, but as I mentioned earlier, by the consultants, by the city staff, by the city council, by not only the five members that are here, but the many members who sat here before us. So I just hope all of that going forward will, will stop because we all live in a great city. This is one of the most exciting documents, just like, this feels like back in 2002 and '03 when we were approving the documents for Oviedo on the Park because we could see the vision. That, that's what this is right here. This is not quite historic yet, but it will be because this is laying the groundwork. Drew? What song was that, Drew?
I don't know.
Would you like to share?
I just hit a button and it came off.
It's all right, Drew. It's laying the groundwork for what is going to come and the, and the, the different uses that'll, that'll come in, the different connections that'll be made. The CRA will grow, you know, if we can get some of this development going while the CRA is still in effect, we'll have more increment tax growth from the CRA to reinvest into the rectangular area essentially between Mitchell Hammack and Franklin Street. So there, there's a lot of great things for Oviedo that are going to come out of this agreement and it has been being worked on for nearly a year now and I can see Rob- and it has been being worked on for nearly a year now, and I can see Rob Gabetti must have been involved in this just by reading it. Yes? And Lonnie? Lonnie and Rob? Because, boy oh boy, this is a very familiar reading. So I'm excited that this is here. The future councils are going to have a nice base to work off of with this agreement, and just like with Oviedo on the Park, there'll be tweaks and changes as it goes forward. It's not the final plan, but it's the direction that it's setting. So, you know, great job to everybody. Like I said, I'm enthusiastic about this. This will be fun to watch what happens with this over the next five or 10 years, because this is really going to separate us from a lot of the other cities that are in Seminole County, so. Anything else from the council? Mr. Cobb, anything to add before I call the question? Nothing from you, I'm sure. You know when to fold them, right? All right, so the motion on the table is to adopt resolution number 3862-19. All in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. So that is a little bit of history for Oviedo happening right there, so great job, everyone. We have no other items on our agenda, so we are going to go on to the city manager's report. Mr. Cobb?
Thank you, Mayor. Just to give you a little bit about history, that last resolution you adopted was very personal to me. When I was just a planner with the city, the city manager sent, well, I think it was planning director, the city manager sent me to a meeting with the downtown property owners and the consultant that the city had hired to do the PD and AP for 426, 419. And they were arguing about the red lights at 434 and Geneva Drive. Do you remember back in the day when you had the red light, the red light at 434 and 426 and Geneva Drive? And they were arguing about it because the engineers couldn't get their level of service to work. They couldn't make the traffic flow. And I was, Mr. Seaver told me, he said, "Just go and watch." I said, "Okay, and you report back what's going on." Well, as would have it, he stuck me in a room with folks and they're talking about visioning. I can't just sit and watch. And so one of the folks asked, well, our city planners here, why don't we ask him what to do? And the first words out of my mouth, we'll shift Geneva Drive to the east, and let's create city blocks, and let's start looking at how we can restructure the land use and do some economic development within this area. The next day, I got called to the city manager's office, and the engineers asked that I no longer be allowed to come to any more of those meetings. Because it made them look...
You have that effect on folks.
Yes. They were, they didn't like the fact that I came up with a solution when they had spent almost a year on the project. So that project is very dear to me, and it will stimulate. It's the missing link that we needed to get this project going, and so I'm excited about it, and I thank you for indulging my lengthy PowerPoint. There was a lot in there to describe, and so, but anyway, with that, Mayor, that's my report.
Thank you, Brian. So on our last meeting, we got to, I got to see my final Brian-ization of a document.
Actually, I think that one's more Axelized than it is Brian.
I think the two of you together have created a new term, so we'll leave it at that. Mr. Groot, do you have anything for us, Stephen?
Just one thing, just to say, it's been a distinct honor and privilege to serve under you, Mr. Mayor, and with you, Councilmember Henkin. You're classy guys, you're the best of the best, and I've learned a lot from you, and I've just really enjoyed every meeting I've ever come to, I have enjoyed.
Thank you, Mr. Groot. We've certainly, I think I could speak for Councilman Henkin, we've learned a lot from you. You've always kept us pretty straight, so we appreciate that. Chief, you're up.
I'm just going to touch real quick on the trip we made up to DC. We got there around 10:00 or so, and then between 5:30, we had six meetings. We saw memorials and things just pass by the car. I'm going to particularly talk about the meeting we have with DOJ and EPA. The COPS grants from DOJ have traditionally gone to communities, that's a hiring grant, have traditionally gone to communities with high crime rates. My conversation with DOJ was not taking into account the officers like Oviedo that have almost 8% of their officers are protecting our students in the schools. Therefore, you're taking away from response and community policing, which doesn't go into part of their calculations for DOJ grants for hiring. So we had a good conversation, and I got some tips on how we might be able to do that once the lawsuits stop and the COPS grants start flowing again. The EPA, we talked a lot about Lake Jessup. They gave us some good ideas on possibly some funding, working with them, with local and through them, so those meetings were good in dealing. The other meetings with our Congress, our Congresswoman and the state senator, and our senators were FEMA-related, and that started out way before I got up here, so I'll let someone else deal with that because it is very convoluted. That's all I have.
To say the least.
To say the least.
Actually, I'm going to piggyback on your report for a second here. The EPA meeting, I think one of the best things that came out of that was septic to sewer, and how even though we're a smaller city, there could be funding available for that for the water, wastewater behind us. I think, Patrick, you took copious notes on that one, so that's the advantage of going up there, folks. You know, you go up there, you sit in front of somebody, you have a conversation with somebody, you'd be amazed at what you can get them to say or talk about when they're right there in front of you and explain things to you, you know, as opposed to just trying to make a phone call. So I know Patrick has all that information, and those are things that perhaps we can work on in the future. Councilman Britt, you're up.
We got just two quick items, a little bit down and in from what the chief was talking about. First, I heard a rumor that Hageri High School volleyball team won the state championship this weekend, so congratulations to them. I think if we can get them out here...
I think I heard Drew working on that.
Working on that? Okay. Okay. And the second thing was, I saw a note about Quesadillas for Life. I guess Tracy's sitting up there, but I'm a Quesadilla fan, so if you have a chance, get ahold of her. I think they're selling them on Friday.
Change it up from James to Quesadillas.
Good, good. I think I'll have my order in, save me some for Friday afternoon.
Well, now, Keith, you should announce, that is open to the public, too, right, Drew?
It is.
Right, from what, Drew, why don't you come up here? Phil, listen. Because that's Relay for Life fundraiser.
It's one of the annual fundraisers that we do. In the past, we've always done our chicken and steak sandwiches. Staff decided to switch it up and go to Quesadillas. We routinely start around 11:00. We do deliver to city staff who want to purchase, but it's open to the public to come, and we routinely go from around 11:00 until around 2:00 in the afternoon.
And where you...
Gymnasium Aquatic Facility, and we do package deals. I can't remember exactly what the cost is.
I thought I saw something about $10.
Yeah, $10. Normally, you get a drink and chips and then Quesadillas this time.
Five is going to Relay for Life, and five is the cost of food.
Yes, sir. Covered in costs.
32 ounces. 32 ounce drink, a big one. They wouldn't like you in New York City. Good job.
Yep, so.
It's good.
Change it up a little bit.
Great. Keith, I didn't mean to hijack your report, but I thought that was important.
That's good, no, that's good.
So we're going to see you down there, right?
If we put an advanced order, can I come and pick them up and bring them to the guys over at the Space Center?
I think so.
All right.
We can make that happen.
I'll spread the word.
All right, thank you.
And that's all I have, except I just want to say, before I get choked up here, about I've really enjoyed working with you two gentlemen.
Been fun.
We've got, did a lot of stuff.
Lot of stuff.
And I'm going to miss you both. So good luck to both of you.
Well, we're not going far. I'll be at the UCF games.
All right.
We can go watch the basketball games. We can go have a beer. We're not going too far. My report, I'll just end it briefly. It's been a great run, it's been a lot of fun sometimes, and a lot of heck sometimes. You know, so congratulations to the new mayor, congratulations to the new councilwoman, great job by all those who decided to run. Anybody thinks this is easy, I've said this before, this is not easy. It gets made to look easy, but it's not easy. As you saw in the campaign this year, all the hard work that went in by five individuals for two seats. The city is on a terrific path. The residents have high expectations, mayor and councilwoman. There are things they expect. There are levels of service, communication, that they expect from us now. And I mentioned this, I think at the last council meeting, and if I did, if I'm repeating myself, I do apologize, but it was Mike Roberto in this very chamber who told us all 15 years ago, maybe even longer, that when you make the goals bigger than council, doesn't matter who sits here, because that's what the residents expect. So best of luck to everybody. Steve and I will be here on the second. We have to, we're going to be opening the meeting, approving the minutes, because that'll be our final act, and then we will watch everybody get sworn in, and wish you all the best of luck, and I hope you know what you wished for. So I think this is going to be great. And to you, Judith, you're about to make history, so that is going to be exciting, and we'll talk about that next week. So, thank you, everyone. I do appreciate 20 years of faith and 10 elections won, so I couldn't be happier to have served with not only these five, all the others I've served with, and especially the guy to my left. I mean, that's get your condo at the beach ready so we can go out there and have some fun. So that is the end of my report. Deputy Mayor, you're up, and I just noticed ironically, you get to go last.
Yep.
Well, I'm going to miss you guys.
We're not dying. Everybody remember that.
I am getting a complex, though. I mean, since I got elected, the police chief, which we got back, the fire chief, now the mayor, I don't know.
Hey, when you sit here long enough, you see them all drop off, one by one.
I've been through three fire chiefs, and Martin Lars began it, Peterson, Drago, Chudnow, Coleman, four police chiefs.
Six city managers.
Oh, hell, I lost count of city managers, but I've been through a lot of them, but that's the best one we ever had. I will say that to my dying day, that man cares about this city, so it just happens, it's all right.
And you guys care about the city, and you all have done a tremendous job.
Climate Works directors, we've been through a couple of those.
How long have you been here, Bobby?
Three. As director of the city.
Yeah, as director.
Finance directors, we've been through...
Eight years.
Yeah, we've been through a few finance directors, but we got the best one back there, but he's going to want to retire soon. HR directors, we've had a few of those. City clerks, I've served under two. I think all you guys only served under one. Yeah, Cindy was here. Well, I didn't really serve under, when we were on LPA.
Cindy was here when...
Yeah, we were on LPA with Cindy.
You were here when I got here.
Cindy was here.
Okay.
Yeah, right, 2000. So, yeah, I think I served under two, but you know, the one, there's one that you just can't ever get rid of. One. That damn Parks and Rec director. I've been the only Parks and Rec director since I've been.
Bad silver.
I'm sorry, Bob, I just, you got me on a roll there.
All right. Well, anyways, thank you for all of your hard work over these years, and you've done a tremendous job with the city, and I hope we can keep moving forward in the direction that you've set and the past councils have set. And I wish you all the best of luck, and you've all got our numbers, so if we mess up, that's all I got.
We ain't going nowhere.
And I won't be at that podium yelling, Jack, I can assure you of that.
That ain't happening.
No, that's not happening, that's, but we'll be at the USF tailgate. Did you guys, everybody hear about that?
Eight o'clock?
Eight o'clock game for USF. So it'll be a night game for the war on I-4, one final, big, long tailgate. So that will be awesome, actually. But Councilman Henkin, close us out.
So that's it, huh? That's a wrap?
That's it. This is, you get the wrap.
That was, you know, obviously, as anybody that knows me close knows, it's very difficult to say goodbye. I don't like goodbyes, but I'm good now, but, you know, it seemed like just yesterday, and my, you know, Gina was sitting there, and I was sitting there, and I looked at this picture today that I had from the Oviedo Voice, and I was sitting in exactly where Axel is right now, and I was looking up at the council, and I had this very concerned look on my face, and I was like, and I was...
You had that little mustache.
No, oh, yeah, I did, and I got rid of that. Delary told me to lose that, you know? But I had this very concerned look on my face because there were so many things that we wanted to do and so many things that we accomplished. But, I mean, I was driving over here today, and I said to Gina, "Wag, that's the last time I'm going to drive over." You know, it kind of hits you. But, you know, I think as the mayor said, we've had such a great run, there's so many good people out there, our staff, you guys really, I mean, you really deserve a round. Our staff is incredible. New council members, you will get to see how good these staff members are, you know, to make you look good. You know, and I said it when I was trying to talk before, Brian is amazing. Brian, I think, you know, I didn't work with Mr. Williford, but I had some dealings with him as a citizen, so I've got to see pretty much every city manager. Brian, you are, you are amazing, my friend. I mean, leaves no stone unturned, great listener, always makes you feel important, you know, even if you come up with some bad ideas, so Brian, thank you. Lonnie, you know, I wish Bill was here tonight. Pass our regards to Bill. Bill swore me in the first time, and I think Lonnie every time after. That's a good man who has kept the city out of trouble for so many years, and I hope your reign continues as the next council goes through. You know, a few other things, the police and the fire, I mentioned them, there's so many names. Chief White is not here tonight, but we thank Lars for everything he did. It was fun working with him when I gave him that crazy idea for tornado sirens, and then he finally got on, and then we all got on, and that was good, but the police and fire have always stood with both of us every time we needed them for something. So police, fire, it's incredible. And I think the mayor, he pointed out something good. Judith, I just want to say, it has been, and I gave you something, you can read it later, the historic journey, and especially, all right, you got to stop that. Smile. Judith and I...
Judith cries more than you.
She does. And that's why it's so fitting that she comes and takes my seat, because who would have thought that 10 years ago, when I didn't know her, I have this lady, you know, Barbara Callme, I have this lady running against her, who is she? I loved her then, 10 years ago. She was my opponent, always so graceful, but the historic journey that you've had, and please let her sit right here, that means everything to me in this chair. Good luck to you. Megan, you have got some big shoes to fill. I think you'll do it well. We've all had our differences through the past, but we're all going to be rooting for you, so come up here, bring the city together, and do it well. So I'll just leave that. Guys, it's been great, and let's go to Ale House, I'm hungry.
Leave it to Steve to wrap it all up, but you know, we did forget one small item because our mayor-elect has a new member of her family.
Oh, yeah.
Aaron is his name? Nine, did I read nine pounds, six ounces?
Yes.
That was one big boy. God bless you. How's mom?
I'm hanging in there.
After that, I could only imagine.
And three or four days old, he went to his first government meeting, didn't he? Good for you.
But... But now, you know, Megan, Madam Mayor, has been through the swearing-in before, so she understands it. And, you know, Steve made a good point. I mean, I remember 20 years ago, standing there with my family, just like I was here with them tonight, the very first time being sworn in, and it was Bill Colbert who swore me in also. And Judith, when you stand there and take that oath, you think you have tears now. Try not to, just listen to the words. It's not as easy as it sounds, but just repeat the words, and it'll get easier as you get reelected. Then you just go up there, and you're like, "Yeah, okay, I swear, yeah, blah, 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 we're good."
I would tell Lonnie all the time after the first time, I would say, "Please just do it three words at a time," because it's very hard. Now I could recite the whole thing in my sleep, so it's going to be great.
All righty, so let's wrap this up. Mr. Cobb, before I announce future meeting dates, anything else with the good of the order? No, Mayor. No? Anything from the council?
Good.
Barbara, anything? Good. All righty, future meeting dates, Monday, December 2nd, 2019, 6:30 PM. There is a tentative executive work session for Monday, December 9th, 2019, so I'm sure staff will keep all the new members and the council members abreast of that. Monday, January 6th, 6:30 PM regular session, and I say this all the time, Tuesday is correct, January 21st, at 6:30 PM. It's Martin Luther King Day on the Monday, so it's got to be pushed off to the Tuesday. Councilman Hankin and I will be here briefly on the second. I may wear my jacket, I may come in with a special T-shirt on, we'll see. I haven't quite decided yet, I don't know if Debbie's going to let me wear my T-shirt I want to wear, but we'll see if she lightens up a little bit. But with all that being...
Before you bang that gavel, I got one person that I forgot to thank, and probably, you know, other than Brian and keeping it straight, Barbara. I remember, I remember the day I got up here, you have tied up every loose end for us through all these years. You know, we talk about a great city manager, that's the best city clerk that we'll ever have, and I hope she doesn't retire, although I think that might be in the mix, but we have an awesome young lady here on the end who's going to just pick up the reins and restore well. So Barbara, thank you so much, it's been a pleasure. Good.
Barbara wants to go cruising with her grandkids, right? Do you have any planned? Disney, anything coming up?
Not yet.
Get one, you need it.
Yeah, exactly, get one's good. All righty, I've announced the future meeting dates. It is for the final time, 20 minutes after 8:00. We're adjourned. There you go.